Come back up on stage and put her in a chair. They all go off the ground. The difference.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah. And welcome. It's like open air. Set the ball.
That's. You don't want to.
Yeah. Exactly. Methoxine.
Back to work. I had three years.
Yeah.
Sam. Got a city. Oh, three. He is. He's not. He's. It's very funny. I have. Yes. Being in those times. This is just one or two. Right. And. Yeah, well, it's done.
I guess so.
Sure.
Well, see, I didn't answer.
Yes.
Oh, well, thank you. They maybe break.
It is that happening? Some divisions.
Oh, it was included in the last. Because it isn't.
It's. It's. It sounded like that wasn't the one thing. No, we don't do the park. Yeah, it was a combination things. That was two. Didn't talk to me. For. Let's see that. Hopefully somebody will pick it up. All right. Maybe it doesn't matter. I don't know. That it doesn't matter. We need some. Anybody from. Thank you. Not him. Yeah. Caitlin will be here. She's out of the country. Oh. Yes, yeah. She's. Hit me or.
Go to Mexico for the day.
Okay. It's not a start. We'll bring this meeting to order at six thirty unless it a fudge. Hi.
United States of America. United Republic of West Kansas. One nation, our mother. A peaceful, religious, and justice for all.
Okay. I am told that everybody from the planning commission is here. And everybody from city council is here. So we. I thought there was one mission for the. Kate. Yeah, she's. So she's out. Oh, gotcha. Yes, I can't wait for it. Um, it looks like we have one person sign off, Miss Judy Gerard. Would you like to come on up?
Um, I've heard a couple of conferences and basic things I wanted to follow along. Uh, my name is Judy Gerard. I'm through about five Main Street. And I'm a was a member of the transportation planning group that helped put this draft together. And I had to miss the last meeting and I'm sorry that I had to listen last last meeting. And I did have some concerns that I gave to Kirk, but it was sort of like at the last minute. And so I thought I would come here. And also express those concerns. Um, so it's in the future, but it has to do with the bypass phase three, which is mentioned on page fifteen. The transfer draft transportation plan that you got in your packet. And it's just sort of like a whole by, yeah, by the way, there's some future planning going on. And I try not anything that we talked about in the transportation meetings, transportation plan meetings. Uh, to discuss or mitigate concerns that we might have. And so I want to share with you my concerns. So thirty years from now, I can say I told you so. And so on page fifteen, the bypass is mentioned, it involves a bridge built on Ferry Street, bringing traffic up Ferry Street. And um. Decades away. Who knows about the funding could happen, it never happened, we don't know. But right now it's in plans. It's in ODOT's hands. It's in plans. And back in twenty ten, when that plan was uh identified and created and given to ODOT. I don't think people in town were imagining what we have now here in terms of downtown development and the potential for more of that kind of downtown development in the area where it's being developed. In fact, I don't think at that time in twenty ten, people imagined that Putz Market would close and that the bank would leave town. We were fighting about what side of the park to put the playground equipment on. That's what was happening in twenty ten. And so if a new bridge returns heavy traffic to that portion of Ferry Street. It's my belief that that could possibly impede access to the new hotel that's being planned for that corner. And it could impede traffic for the current business that's there in the other corner. It could impede traffic. Walking, riding, biking down to the riverfront, for which there are some ideas that that could be developed for recreational opportunities. And a bridge built by ODOT will have a humongous footprint because they don't build small. They build big. They build big and safe. That's true. That should. But it would be a humongous footprint on our riverside and riverfront. And again, the traffic um could impede what what we're envisioning now for that area. And I know this transportation plan isn't a bypass plan. It it's not meant to be. But I also don't have a call us talking about mitigating these kind of kind of concerns in those meetings. I do remember us talking about the future possibilities of the riverfront. And the boat landing and things that could possibly happen. And if you look at the backside, I offered you a picture that's currently being used now in Discover Dayton.
Yes.
The nice pedestrian bridge, the idyllic nature of that scene, walking that, walking over that to Oldham Park and, you know, seeing all the birds and all that kind of stuff that's over there. So, you know, a humongous bridge from ODOT would change that. So uh my experience of government is that when there's no money, government plans. And then when there is money, they got a plan that they can work. So my concern right now is that ODOT's got a plan, phase three. It's not like the done deal plan. But in that phase three plan, they have this bridge that comes across Ferry Street. And uh it's in their construction modeling, it's in their budget modeling, it's in their future modeling, bridge at Ferry Street. So my suggestion is that we include in this twenty year plan. That we uh relook at, relook at that, revisit it, reimagine what we're talking about with that connection. On Ferry Street and possibly communicate with ODOT that uh we might want to change that in some fashion. Given where we are now with our downtown and the future development that we believe is going to happen there. And if nothing else, at least to get a reconsideration into ODOT's mind that when it comes time and more and more imminent with phase three. At some point in the future, who knows when, but when we're more imminent with that, we revisit what Dayton is like at that point in time and say, let's take a look at what connection we need then. So I think that communicating that as a priority now with ODOT. Kind of puts us on the path to say, you know, we're putting a a point in it here right now. We want to revisit this at some point. Don't just go ahead and plan like it's going to be this thing that we talked about fifteen years ago. So that's something I think needs to be represented in a transportation plan that covers twenty years because in that span of twenty years, phase three planning. Might start seventeen years from now, eighteen years from now, nineteen years from now. Maybe it'll happen next year. I don't know. I just wanted to get that before you and have that in your thinking cap because it's in my thinking cap. Thirty years from now, I don't want to say I told you. And. With that. I'm gonna let you guys wrestle with the rest of this and I'm gonna walk back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And by the way. Kurt's done a great job with transportation planning group and I really appreciate his effort and his calm demeanor around how he's corralled us. So thank you.
Wow, good. See you guys later. Thank you. Best. All right. Well. You are done with that. We shall move right into the discussion I mean, but they can transportation system plan. Did you want to introduce somebody or?
Do that, Kurt.
You.
Um, yeah, so I'm Kurt Fisher. I'm the contract planner with the Mountainland Valley Council of Government. So um. You know, as Judy said, sort of. Orchestrated the whole project over the past uh year or so, and this event tonight was put uh in the work plan to. Mainly give all you because you're all decision makers on what finally is adopted, ultimate decision initiative. So you wanted us to knock them out. In front of you and give you the chance to review it and and comment on it, get your perspective on it before that we went to. Uh, the first public hearing, which would be which is. Uh, now planned for um let's know the planning mission. On the thirteenth and then. At city council on December first for the um adoption and first reading of the ordinance. So. That's what we're here for tonight. And then I'm going to, with that, I'm going to pass it over to Scott Manzor, who's with uh DKAS Associates, who are the uh. Uh, transportation planners that we um that we were connected with through DLCD for the grant of the project. So.
Great. Thank you. Again, I'm Scott Manzor with DKAS Associates and excited to be here and kind of walk you through kind of your transportation system plan. A little bit of a background on on why we're undertaking this uh transportation system plan. And just make sure any questions you have about projects or anything that was has been identified or answered before we start going um through the hearings process for adoption. So. It's the first slide. So the the agenda tonight is just talk a little little bit about um our our TSP process. Um, the transportation in Dayton, um implementation. Further work um and then that's going to need to take place through this process and our next steps. So if you go the first slide. I want that. Uh, sorry, one more. Thank you. Yep, that's the one. Um, so just a little background. Kurt mentioned um that this was a grant, uh but going through the process, this was a, this is a partnership program. Uh, TGM is the Transportation Growth uh Management Program, and it's a program that they help fund transportation studies for agencies. Um, to to look at their transportation system plant planning and and kind of help manage growth within uh the state of Oregon. Um, so that's the, that's where the funding came from through this. Uh, the city was um basically put in for a competitive grant and was selected and and this project was funded through that process. The next slide. So this is kind of a little bit of a one on one of the transportation system planning. And what is a transportation system plan? Um, it's a long range twenty year plan um that addresses all needs for transportation users. And so what we do is we look at a twenty year, we look at the, you have the growth inside your urban growth boundary and kind of. Potential gr- growth of residential housing, um also uh jobs and employment. Um, and that data is used to kind of evaluate the next twenty years of your transportation system. So we look at walking, biking, transit needs. Uh. Yeah, Kitty, yes.
Yes, um. You're missing something. Wheelchair.
Yes.
Still not mentioned in here. It is absolutely a form of transportation.
And and one of the, I know you provide that in that input and actually it's in one of our slides that I was feedback we received at that next meeting. We're waiting to get the feedback from you tonight too, before we make any revisions.
Oh.
But we've definitely documented that.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, yeah, we heard that and I'll point that out when we go through the slides. So, yeah. So the the motor vehicle as well, including freight, we're looking at kind of how the growth occurs, um making sure that we have a safe um and and equitable transportation system. Um, it identifies transportation goals, um things like. Safety, um support economics, supporting businesses. And so there's a section, the transportation system plan um in the draft that kind of goes through a lot of those goals that we've. Um, set working with you and in the public. Um, it identifies, uh, I'm sorry, it values needs and provides financial forecasts. So one of the things we do through the transportation system plan. Is we look at what are the future projects you're going to need to support the development? Um, how much are those projects going to cost? And then we also work on the economic side of how much money will likely be available. Um, and a lot of times the what what what's available, we know a hundred percent sure of through gas tax and other funding revenues. Um, that we know is going to be available. There's also a lot of opportunities and some of the projects we've laid out, there'll be opportunities for other grants and and seeking other transportation funds. But that's part of the, you know, seeking the. Understanding the financial side of the transportation system and also helping formulate transportation STCs or other ways to come up with funds to to build the projects that you need to. Um, to identify and prioritize solutions um consistent with state, regional and long range plans and policy guidance. Um, and also will identify, support transportation to make sure that kind of the the projects we're identifying will support livability, equity and safety. Um, so I'll go to the next slide. So. Sorry, man. So why TSP update at this time? So one of them is required by um Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty twelve of the transportation planning rule. Um, and just also from a practical standpoint, it it helps you formulate your capital improvement program for the future. Um, it'll, it also provides a basis for system developments charges. As as you're expecting developments occur, you'll you'll know the funds that you're going to need and kind of help identify. Systems development charges and and fees that you can charge to make sure that development's paying their fair share to the transportation system. Um, informs land use development conditions of approval. Some of the standards we'll talk about really help. Identify as development comes in to make sure your transportation system uh works well and is safe. Um, provides rationale for making investments and land use decisions. Um, ensures planned transportation system will meet your long term needs. So making sure the projects we identified are going to support uh your changes to your schools. Um, to the development, to your parks, making sure you have a well-connected system uh for mobility devices and ADA improvements um through that. Identified the right of way needs for improvements. So as developments are coming in, making sure that you're acquiring the right of way that you're going to need to build the future streets and paths and trails. Within your city. Um, also provides a consistency between state, regional, local planning. Um, and also provides a link to the state um statewide transportation improvement program. Um, if you let me remember, remind me at the end too, I can respond to the comment about the ODOT um project too. The next slide. So this is, you should have a copy of the draft transportation system plan, but this is a kind of the the overview of the contents. We've got the introduction to the TSP. Just the overview of the TSP process, the shared vision. So that chapter three is where we talk a little bit about the goals and objectives. Um, of the TSP, the current travel conditions, that's how is your your system operating today? Um, not taking into account that future growth. Um. Guided growth, so understanding how your city is going to grow and how that's going to affect the transportation system. Um, the system standard, so as as new projects are built. What types of projects, what are your streets and intersections going to include? So having those standards and also as developments come in. What requirements are they going to have to follow um to evaluate the transportation system and make sure that they're mitigating their impacts as they develop and add traffic to the system? Um, kind of the guiding framework, our plan project. So we have our project list that identifies the projects that we're recommending for the next twenty years. Um, and then also just some of the supporting strategies um like neighborhood traffic management. A lot of the feedback we received as we were talking to the public around town was the cars are traveling too fast. And so we've now also provided some standards and. Also some guidance and strategies to help you manage some of the problems that you're having today. That's a general overall. Pause there for a second. See if they have any questions before I keep going. Great. Um, so if you go to the next slide, thank you. Um, so the review of the TSP process, so chapters one, two, I I hit on this from a kind of high level, um but chapters one and two, the draft TSP. Um, it's the the long term policy and planning document to guide transition improvements through twenty forty five. Um, so what do we want? So that's where we've been talking to the public and and evaluating the existing system and figuring out what are those needs? Um, what do we have now? Um, what will we need in the future? How will we fund our projects? Um. And what should we do first? We also help prioritize and tell you what are the, based on what we heard from the public and the the needs of the system. What are the highest and most important projects for the future? Um, we've also collaborated among city staff, ODOT, Dayton residents and other stakeholders uh as we've gone through this TSP process. Next slide, please. And so this is some of the collaboration and public outreach. Um, we've had four meetings with your public, uh with your project advisory committee meeting. Uh, committee. We've got two open houses where we gathered feedback on the existing conditions and needs. And then also the last one, we presented the project list and received feedback on that. We also had a youth workshop um where we were informed of biking and walking routes near schools. Um, and this is really covered um and discussed in chapter two of our draft TSP. Next slide, please. And then some other, the collaboration and public outreach, um some of the most common public concerns we heard as we were going through this and listening to the public. Was speeding and traffic calming, um speed, the desire for speed bumps, maybe speed feedback signs, lower speed limits within the city. And a lot of gaps in the sidewalk network and not having a safe place to walk um within the city.
Sure.
Um, some of the feedback we received our last pack meeting and Kitty, this is where um you provide that feedback. Um, that will be incorporated into the TSP document that will come to the planning commission and city council um down the road, but was the. More discussion about the inclusion of uh mobility devices. Um, and updates to the system challenges to uh to reflect pedestrian needs around the high school. So that was one of the things we heard that they feel like um had been addressed. Any questions about the the outreach? So. And then our kind of where we're at in the project scheduling sees we've um started in the summer of twenty twenty four and we've been working through kind of the understand. Um, the city's transportation system, then we evaluated it and now we're kind of in the recommend uh. The draft TSP to the planning commission and the city council and to seek uh adoption of the the TSP. So that's kind of a general, general overview of the TSP. Now I'm going to get into a little bit about transportation in Dayton and in the TSP. Um, so the next up. Um, this figure just goes through and identifies some of the system challenges we found through both our analysis and and providing feedback and listening um to the public through the uh project advisory committee. Um, and the open houses and you can see some of the the recommendations or desires for bicycle facilities, for sidewalk needs. Um, especially in relation to schools. Um, we heard a lot about um. Unclear school speed zones in in the vicinity of the schools, especially on some of the local streets around the school, um where the. Public felt like um they're higher than desired speeds traveling in in those uh vulnerable areas with with children. Um, also some of the system challenges, the the need for additional crosswalks um for students and also within the neighborhoods. Um, so our system challenges, we we've uh summarized that in chapters four or five, if you want to. Um, dig into that more and um feel free to ask us questions. Um, as you go through or a- any of the questions, you're welcome to pass on to Kurt or myself and. Those will get get added on. We'll make sure to um respond and address to address um those questions. Um, next slide, please. One of the things we evaluate as well as transportation standards and that can look at, one of the things we identified was the need for um updates to your collector street um cross sectional standards and. A lot of uh the the standards identify as a development comes in, let's just say a subdivision comes in to build fifty lots. Um, and they have frontage along one of your streets. These street standards help the city identify how much right of way to acquire as part of that development. What the what the vision is for that street. Um, are we going to have bike lanes on the street? Are the bike lanes going to be separated? How wide are the sidewalks going to be? And so. We've identified, we've evaluated your standards, looked at kind of the Oregon requirements um and made recommendations for changes to those standards. Um, and that would be, um, that, those are all summarized in uh draft, uh chap- chapter six of your draft TSP. Um, some of the other things we did is identify mobility standards. So as developments come in. Um, we've identified a level service D standard for the city. And that way, if as development comes in and generates a lot of traffic, it ends up impacting your intersections. That will give you um the code requirements to require um improvements based on their added traffic to the system. Um, and we've also added guidelines um to follow when those developments come in of requiring them to prepare a traffic impact study um as part of that development. Those are some of the standards we evaluated and some of the recommendations and um that we made in chapter six of the draft TSP. Um, chapter seven, um, it's a, yeah, thank you. Um, this is our proposed project. So you can see in some of the areas of the city, um as you look to um the west portion of of the city limits. You can see some of that areas of of future development. So we've identified some of the street network. Um, it's recommended as that development occurs and and these are, these are just really rough planning ideas, but as that development comes, ob- obviously some things may change depending on how things develop. But this is. Based on typical standards and and spacing of roadways, where we've tried to kind of provide a layout for both. Um, the future development, but also some of your existing roads and identified um three types of projects. We've identified roadway projects, which those are. Typically your um street improvements, turn lanes, kind of cre- creating a complete street. We have mo- multimodal improvements. Which those are typically where we're trying to get bike lanes and safe routes to school connections between your neighborhoods and schools where kids are going to be walking. Um, identifying pedestrian crossings and enhanced safety crossings for schools. Um, and then also um multimodal projects which are balancing, that's going to be your complete streets with your sidewalks, your bike lanes. Um, turn lanes, whatever that, whatever identified in your street standards. Um, but one of the reasons we've identified those types of projects is there's a lot of different buckets. Um, in the in the state of Oregon as well as federal, there's federal safety funds that come available every year. Uh, there's also, the the state has safe routes to school projects. So now we've identified their projects that the city can go and request grants for some of those safe routes to school projects. So the. The Texas projects I've identified also align with many of the different transportation funding sources outside of the city that would be available for for grants. I'll pause there for a second. Does anybody have any? Questions about that?
Well, this doesn't sound right.
As far as um.
I'm just looking at this current map under.
No, it, yes, exactly. And and one of the things, uh, one of the. It's set in stone, meaning it gives, it gives the city the ability to for like, where where's definitely not set in stone is a lot of the development areas.
Right.
They're just recommended, but if you come in for some, sometimes it's just a line on the map. So maybe it goes through a wetland. Well, we don't want a street to go through a wetland, right? Or or goes through a an oak tree. Um, so there is a lot of flexibility that the city has, but in general, this is our our desire. But there's, as development occurs, it it'll look very different. Um, but it, we've kind of provided the framework for what we're hoping for. That that answers your.
The development on that road is going to involve probably changing everything from net road to the first sidewalk in town.
Mm-hmm.
That's all undeveloped. There's no walking, there's no crosswalks. Nobody even knows that people are there most of the time.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the challenges too is. When when we look at this, we're looking at planning the whole area, but that's sometimes not how a development happens, right? It might, maybe it's just the southwest corner of the development and you've still got to provide access to that development. So. And we've, we've provided the framework, but you're correct in that now things will always, you know.
Well, a lot of kids walk through there. I mean, it's just scary, scary.
Yeah. Yes.
A similar question. Um, so are for the roadway, the red line?
Yes.
Um. You said street improvements, turn lanes, bike lanes, but what about sidewalks?
Yes, that would include sidewalks. Yeah, any, all all of the streets within um your city limits, they've been identified to have sidewalks.
Okay.
Yes. And usually your arterial and collector roadways, those are going to have bike bike lanes. Your local streets do not typically have bike lanes, but that's one of the differences between your, your, your arterials, your collectors and then local streets. But sometimes those, that street design may look a little different. Any other questions? So just this, this map and actually details and cost estimates for each of these projects um is identified and and kind of discussed in chapter seven, if you want to look into that in more detail on that. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so chapter nine of the draft of the draft TSP provides additional strategies to address some of the transportation concerns we heard from the public. Um, and from pro- project advisory committee. Um, those related to traffic calming, the desire for crosswalk improvements and parking management. And so as you read chapter nine, that's just giving the city some tools as. Uh, for you to work with and also, you know, seek funds um and to also work with the neighborhoods um with, to address some of those concerns that they have of some of the tools that they can use. To help reduce speeds. Um, the next, next slide, please. So this is kind of a a review of funding and this is very common when we do a transportation system plan for it, for cities and counties in Oregon. Um, as you can see, when we take all the projects that we want to want to build over the next twenty years, it comes up to about tw- just under twenty four million dollars. Um, but as we look at revenue forecasts and what we expect, there are only about four million is going to be available. And so one of the things we're. One of the things we're we're asked to do as part of this is to create a financially constrained project list. So what projects can we build? With the money we have available. It's very common that you're going to, you're going to get a lot more funding than four million dollars, but this is what we know we can get. There are a lot of different revenue sources that the city can seek additional funds, but what we've done is based on our. Kind of prioritization and what we've heard from the public, we've identified. Those projects as the financially constrained project list. That doesn't mean. Things are going to, doesn't mean a different project that's not on here is not going to get built. But it's just giving you kind of a direction for your capital improvement program for the funds that you know you will have available. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the implementation. And kind of through three parts to the implementation of the transportation system plan. There's the T S P adoption. Which is the document you have that we'll we'll seek to adopt. There's also the comprehensive plan, transportation element updates. So that's looking at. A little bit, and I got a little bit more detail of each of those. And then the land use development code updates. And again, we have the transportation planning rule that we have to make sure that we're in compliance with as we go through this process. So the comprehensive plan updates. Where you can either replace or add existing transportation goals and policies. With the T S P goals and objectives. And so what we've done is we've recommended just adding our new transportation goals as part of your comprehensive plan. But that's one of the, one of the things we go through and that will be one of the things that you you evaluate and and approve as part of the adoption of this project. We have, we have a sub consultant on our team, M I G, who's our planning consultant. And they weren't able to be here tonight because they're the ones that are kind of leading our, leading this part of it. For the comprehensive plan updates as well as the changes to the development code. So some of the updates to the development code that we've identified to be in with T P R compliance is. T S P consistency and T P R compliance related to access. So and I'll get into a little bit more some of the access pieces. Circulation, design, parking, transit and procedures. And if you go to the next slide, now provides a little bit more detail. So some of the code code updates are street design and spacing standards or how. As that development occurs, as I, as I mentioned earlier about that development area. Some of those standards say, well, we really want local streets with this type of spacing and that just helps that development kind of gauge. What what transportation improvements are needed through that as well as street design. And that's the. The updates to the street standards that are in your current code. And we're working with West Tech to to make some of those revisions to your street design standards. Orientation of building entrances and parking. Those are some of the requirements to. That are required as part of the new T P R onsite ped circulation. So part of that development code, we're trying to make sure. Mobility devices and and sidewalk connectivity and ADA ramps are connected from the public street to the development. And so having those code requiring to make sure there's a safe path between those new development buildings and the public infrastructure. Yeah, onsite pedestrian circulation, I kind of hit on that a little bit, traffic impact analysis. So again, putting standards in place. Within your code that if a hotel comes into town or a subdivision, it provides clear guidance of what the developer has to do and evaluate in your transportation system to make sure. They're not creating new safety issues and any type of operational issues that they create that they they would be required to mitigate and build the infrastructure to. But mitigate the impacts of their development. Transits stop improvement. So having code that as development comes in and. In that coordination with the with transit agencies to make sure stops are identified in in locations and. If they're, if they're adjacent to developments or if you're building a a larger residential, for example. Making sure that they're doing their part to connect to transit stops, but also add transit stops to support that future residential and as well as employment. And then notification of transportation and transit agencies. So again, as as you're doing that development, just that that code language to make sure that the interagency coordination is occurring. Any questions? Have a few more slides and then I'll open it up. So one of the things related to ferry streets, so some of the further work. And I think council, is it council over? You kind of brought this up a little bit, but. Part of the, we we identify projects and we'll say. You have a collector, let's just say Ferry Street, and we might identify your street standard for that and might have sidewalks and on street bike lanes. But that doesn't mean that's exactly what's going to be built. And when that project comes. Let's just say you have funding to improve, you've worked with O dot, you have a clear understanding of what you want to do. You can still go to the public and and make decisions on, well, do we want a left turn lane on this street? And 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 you can ask a lot of those questions. So. I'd say this T S P is really when it comes to the projects and the street design, it's really a framework. To to kind of help guide. But we really are, the the city is still got needs to to be involved in that process and make sure that you're building streets. And I'll give an example. A recent example in Newburgh where T S P identified a collector and it had a, it had a cross section. And they funded it and they just went out and built it without really talking to the public. And then. Once it got built, the public was unhappy with what was built and they didn't go and listen and make sure, well, how how do you want the street to to function? How do you want it to connect to Newburgh High School? And I think that's one of the things to. You really have to consider is there, this is a framework, but doesn't mean that it's going to get built exactly that way. And that's where. You really have to be invested in that project and make sure what you're building is going to work for the residents of of your city. And so again, this is where we're, we're trying to set the stage and and make sure that you're acquiring enough right away. What we don't want is somebody to come in and build. A subdivision and you got to come back and you and they build houses where you really need future right away. So we're trying to make sure everything's being planned and set up well, but you also have to just know. And then Ferry Street is one of those examples that's. There's going to, that that project's going to take a lot of coordination, you know, as that, yes.
Is it the same three plans that they presented fifteen? And fifteen years ago to us, the same three plans for this extension on Ferry Street with the bridge? O dot, excuse me.
For it for this segment here, I'm not, I I I'm not aware of the the older plan, but I don't know how you know the answer.
Don't know that answer.
There were three designs they presented to us. They all sucked. So, but the bridge one was the worst.
Yeah.
Oh, not presented, the designs?
We can get back to you on that, but I can tell you what was what's being assumed right now as far as kind of that that start starting.
Under because they present three plans. And that's it.
Yeah.
You don't have a say, you got to pick from those three plans regardless.
Yeah, I think through that process and then just working with them. You can't, I mean, they.
Yeah, they left a top.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't get to lose about it. They don't, they're going to do what they want to do.
Yeah, that was one of the.
Are you talking about bypass?
Yes.
So what he's talking about is not the bypass section.
For the bridge part.
This is, this is from.
We still don't want a regular.
This is from Third Street.
Yeah.
Down to city limits.
I'm still concerned about bypass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That will have major impact.
Yeah, and and we, one of our jobs in the T S P is to inform you of what's out there. And that's exactly why we discussed and and on page fifteen. We mentioned that O dot has that plan and that it's part of their plan. But there's nothing in in your project list or that basically says that what they're doing is you agree with and that you're adopting as part of your project. Does that make sense? I mean, we haven't really identified on it.
Pointed, they still have three plans and those are the three you get to choose from.
Yeah.
Whether you like it or not.
Yep, yeah, and. I I hear similar complaints from other, you know, cities and counties. And I think. One of the things when typically when they have funding, they do go through a public process. Now, whether they listen or not, I can't. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they usually revisit that once they, once they have funds and they're ready to, from the planning stage to actually implementation.
Let's hope we got some.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So in in the, as far as the Ferry Street though, kind of the redesign, that's something that's going to need to be discussed and determined and make sure that what's getting built on Ferry Street with it's a, it's kind of the backbone of your system and making sure that it works for. For safe routes to school, for mobility devices, for all those that that want to use that. And so again, I'm just trying to help you understand that the. We're, we're, we're trying to get you ninety percent of the way there, but there's, there's still things that are happening and you're going to want to make sure you're listening and make sure that that street works for your your community. Over to that. And then we talked a little bit about funding and I I went through that and that funding phase. So I think. Like we said, that there there are opportunities that the city can consider down the road to. Look for additional revenue and more of those things as many, most cities have system development charges and. Having a new budget and understanding what what the system's going to cost in the future does allow you to consider and look at. Enacting those type of S T Cs on future development to help pay for some of those improvements. So I think the next slide I have is just our next steps. So the draft T S P is currently under review. If any of you have questions or comments, we'd love to have any of those, have you provide those? By November thirteenth, which is before the first planning commission hearing. And then we'll be coming, we'll revise the draft T S P, we'll address all the comments and then have an adoption ready version. That we'll bring to the city council. In December, the goal is to bring that in December. And then the second reading. D L C requirements will require a second reading for the adoption. Now it's planned for early January. But with that. Open up to any other questions?
Oh, my apologies.
There's by by comprehensive plan policy on the the new development out. In the in the unincorporated part of the U G B of Ferry Street. There's to be a setback for any new development away from the farm land on the other side of the highway. And there's been some suggestion that that would, that that setback here would be a good place for a recreational trail or transportation trail.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything in here about that. Is that something that's come up during your committee meetings?
Yeah, at our, actually our our pack meeting that come up. I think that was at the the fairgrounds parcel that came up at the. That that same parcel, but I don't recall. I think there was discussion that there's plans out there. And there's a lot of unknown about what would occur. And you can, one, one of the things that these documents do is, I mean, we can identify a trail that would connect to your system. But it's really, since it's in the unincorporated county, it's really up to the county to decide, do they want to, you know, as that development comes in or changes come in, do they? Want to require that as.
Well, the development won't happen until it's gets annexed and will be in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so my thinking was, as you said, sometimes the money comes available. And if you're already planning for it, you're eligible for it. But if you haven't planned for it, then then the opportunity doesn't even arise.
Yeah.
So I thought even if it was not, you know, an encumbered project, something. Not one of the high priority, but if it just was even recognized as possibility.
Now, I think, I mean, we could add a a trail that connects, but just so you know. I think if it if it gets annexed into the city, then it will be basically your city limits and then your your street standards would apply, which would already require the. The sidewalks. But where it's a bit of a gray area is if it actually went in as a land use within the county.
Yeah, no, I don't think that would be. So it is in the Parks Master Plan.
It is.
Yeah, so it's, it's on that map.
Okay, okay.
I guess we can, we can look up.
I didn't realize that. So that that's probably.
You haven't been with us the whole time.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So. And that is envisioned as more than just a transportation facility, more than just a path.
Sure.
And more a a linear park. Okay, concept, I think.
I think that that answers. Okay, yes.
Yeah, and the key, and the key things there would be make sure we have a mechanism to. To get that that area dedicated as part of the future.
And we got a presentation like this on Parks Plan, I bet they talked about it there and I forgot, huh?
We mentioned it, but he didn't have the full document. So he has sent me the full document and it and there is a very. Detailed map that has that has that. Corner of. On it. And all the way and all the way around the outer boundary of the U G B and connecting all the way back up to Ash Road. So that that circumferential path is in the plan. And it will connect to. The on street facilities that are in this.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Any other question? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
I guess we're not going to hold this up too long. I'm going to move on to the. Did anybody want to have thought about anything in this or? Nope. All right. Time to comment. It's our pretty terms. We just had a meeting Monday. I don't know if anybody has anything. Diane Fish?
I just don't know. I have to hold some guilt because I, this has been going on while I've been living here and I've sort of ignored it all. And now I'm in the middle of it. I'm thinking, you know what? I should have gone to this meeting.
What? All right then. I guess I would get the motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned seven twelve.